I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, roll call, please.
Dr. DeBardo.
Here.
Bobby Braun.
Here.
Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Matt Miller.
Here.
Scott Peterson. Catherine Solan.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
J.D. Schrader. Danny Pyatt.
Here. Okay, student representatives, we don't have them here. Before I go to the recognition, there's somebody on the screen that we need to recognize tonight. This is her first time becoming a grandma, Gigi exactly is what she's being called. So she's all the way in Kentucky and joining us. So let's give Mrs. Oginski a hand for becoming a grandma for the very first time.
Thanks.
You're very welcome. All right, letter B, recognition. Mrs. Oginski, you're up for the recognition.
Okay, so tonight we have several people that we would like to recognize. And we will get started first with the recognition of Laura Reifert, who is the valedictorian for the graduating class of 2324 at the Anago High School. Laura is pursuing degrees in biology and physics at St. Norbert College. She is also very active in 4H and in the Anago High School Literary Journal and Drama Club, the Environmental Club as well. She is also been a tutor in all St. school and the Boys and Girls Club. At this time, we would like to recognize Laura. Laura, could you please come forward and receive your certificate?
Zooming in, that's okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And up next is Josie Reeve, and I may have pronounced the last name incorrectly. But Josie is not able to be at the board meeting tonight because she has regionals for track. Josie is pursuing an aerospace engineering degree at the University of Notre Dame. She is very involved in marching band, National Honor Society, craft club, DECA, track and field, drama club, key club, and German club. Josie is the salutatorian for the 202324 graduating class for Anago High School. Congratulations, Josie. And up next, we would like to recognize a special gentleman, Mr. Al Fredrickson. Al was received a, an honorary recognition from Luke Fickle, the head football coach for the Wisconsin Badgers. He was given an award for 40 years of service in coaching our youth. So he was recognized by WFC, the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association. At this time, Mr. Fredrickson, could you please come forward and receive your certificate of recognition? And congratulations and thank you for 40 years of service to the youth of the state of Wisconsin.
He's, they changed the schedule for the baseball game, so he was not able to attend. But he did say thank you for the recognition.
And the next person we would like to recognize is Ms. Janet Kribashine. Janet has been fulfilling a vacant spot at the high school, which also happens to be the former position that she fulfilled in the Anago High School. And we appreciate her. She has been doing part-time of her own work and part-time admin assistant at the high school, trying to make sure that everything is in place and prepared and ready to go for graduation, along with the various other things that happen in the ins and outs of supporting our high school. At this time, we would like to recognize Janet. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And next, we would like the following people to come forward to be recognized. Mr. Mike Blood, Mr. Mike Waniger, Mr. Jerry Roden, and Mr. Brendan Galliato. The following staff gave a stellar presentation at our CISA 9 on the topic of UDL, which is universal design for learning. Many CISA 9 attendees and consultants were very impressed with the work our team is doing around UDL. The Unified School District of Anago is always proud to have positive representation in our region and across the state of Wisconsin. And Mr. Waniger, Waniger will be presenting at the WASCD, which is Wisconsin Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development next year around UDL. So would those staff members please come forward and thank you for representing Anago.
And Mary Umland. Mary Umland is, yeah.
And thank you, team.
Thank you.
And that concludes the recognitions. And again, Mary, my apologies for leaving your name off the board.
That's okay.
Okay, letter C is public comment. Do we have anybody calling?
No public comment.
Number three, consent to agenda, approval of agenda, minutes, and financial reports, requests for overnight travel, report of district retirements and resignations, and report of district new hires. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the agenda, minutes from the April 23rd, 2024 Board of Education meeting, May committee minutes, district retirement and resignation report, report of district new hires, financial reports for April and May 2024. Consideration of current bills, checks numbers 7934 through 8031 in the amount of $191,567.09. ACH numbers 232401123 through 232401267 in the amount of $1,222,053.64. And wire transfers in the amount of $14,919.64 for a total of $1,428,540.37.
Motion's been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion? That was a mouthful.
Yeah, I do not need to, thank you.
Are there any discussion, questions on the motion on the floor?
Just want to say thank you to the staff who are leaving our district for your years of service and dedication and your impact to student, staff, and our community. It is appreciated and thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, the voting device is now open. All right, would anyone like to change their vote? All right, the vote is now closed. Dustin? And the motion carries. Letter A, under administrative, administration reports, Director of Business Services. We'll turn this over to Mrs. Oginski, and she will lead this from Kentucky.
Okay, first, under administrative reports, we have the Director of Business Services Report. Mrs. Fossbender is present if anyone has questions. Up next, item B, we have Director of People's Services and Special Education. Mrs. Percon is present. Is there questions about her directory report? Up next, we have the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Stuttrin will be presenting our benchmark assessment data. And one thing I would like to point out before she gets started is moving forward after this year, we will be collecting and presenting our data from spring to spring. And I would like to explain the reason for that. When you look at data from spring to spring, you actually are able to see if a student truly has improved over the course of a year. When you look at data from just the fall to the spring, that doesn't take into any consideration what is known as the summer slide, which is like some of the learning loss that children often experience because of being out of school in the summer. So we do not have that data collected from last year because just various reasons with technical rollovers with eduplimer and because primarily the reporting out was around growth, which growth is, is very important. But when you look at growth, you have to look at aggressive growth in order to be working toward closing those achievement gaps. So I just felt like it was very important for us to talk about that or to put that out there that in preparation for next year, Ms. Stuttrin will be reporting out on spring to spring to spring achievement data because when you look at that over a group of cohorts over several years, you oftentimes will find that there is one group of students who may not have grown any from one grade level to the next, to the next, to the next. And looking at those data points through that lens helps you to identify that and to know, we've really got to compile more efforts into this one group of students to help support them better. So I will stop talking and let Ms. Stuttrin share her data because she has lots of information for you. Thanks, Ms. Stuttrin.
Thank you. So as Mr. Racine is bringing up the data from the curriculum and not the UDL, which will come later in the presentation, totally fine. So one thing, one thing about data is it is a flashlight, right? We can use data for a lot of different things. And at the end of the school year, we really like to reflect on the data, find our celebrations and our positives, and then find our areas of need. Like Mrs. Oginski said, I could sit up here and I could show you the wonderful growth that all of our students have done. I could say 90 some percent of our kids have grown and that we could all feel really good about. However, it doesn't mean they've hit proficiency yet. So I want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that. Like Mrs. Oginski said, growth is wonderful and we celebrate that with our students and we really keep track of it because if you're moving from high risk to low risk, that's a huge achievement. That means we have bumped you up a range and we can then the next year bump you over proficiency. So it's good for us as educators and for our students and families to celebrate that growth. But we're going to talk tonight about proficiency because we need our students to be readers and mathematicians, ready for the next grade level and ready for their success after they graduate high school here at Anago. So if you roll, scroll down all the way to where it says spring, and if you've looked at the data previously, you can see we have a lot of positives. We have positives in our 4K because our students are 25% below grade level, which is a huge growth from the beginning of the year, 11% growth. I actually broke it down, as Mrs. Oginski said, from where we are, our students below grade level because it's good to know where we are. Our students from winter to spring, because that tells us whatever we implemented after spring shows us our growth to now. And then from fall to spring, to see some of that data from when we started the school year to now, that tells us great information as well of things we put in tier one. The universal is working or maybe not working and things we need to change as we move towards the future. So as we look through the data and as the principals come up and administration comes up to talk about their data, remember it's a flashlight of where we're going to head and what we've done great this year and maybe what we need to do better in the future. I always say, and I'll continue to say that, if it's not 100% of our kids passing, then we aren't there yet, right? So we don't even, 99% is not even going to be good enough for here at Anago. So we have a ways to go and I want to make sure we stress that. So as we're looking at below grade level and as we scroll down for A reading, our 4K and kindergartners took early reading, which is our early foundational skills. Grade one jumps to A reading. You can see that from winter to spring, we've had some growth, which is great to celebrate that 20, 12% in first grade are more proficient now than they were at winter. So that tells us whatever we were doing in first grade, we hit a lot of kids and moved them over that proficiency line. So now we need to dig deep into those students that moved and say, what intervention did we do? Maybe what was the classroom teacher doing to move those students? So one by one, we go through the students to really look at that. You can see we've had double-digit jumps in second grade from winter till now, in fifth grade, almost in seventh grade, and almost in 11th grade, which is wonderful because we didn't see that from fall to winter in some of these grades. You will see that our percent of growth, which means percentage of proficiency from fall to spring, in kindergarten, we have some work to do. And again, this isn't the teachers, so I'm not going to sit up here and say our kindergarten teachers, there's a problem. They have implemented a lot of great things. They have pushed forward through new curriculum resources. They have pushed through new interventions. They have pushed through having coaches in their classrooms. This shows me that we still have that phonics deficit and that phonemic awareness deficit that we've been working on. So our kindergarten teachers are working incredibly hard. We know we have some room to grow there and to make sure that we have some growth. You'll see second grade has 18% growth from fall to spring. You can see our eighth grade has 12% decrease. Again, this is not our eighth grade teachers. We have one in the room right now who does a wonderful job. We need to focus as a system of how we are supporting our eighth graders coming into the high school, making sure that this test matters to them and they know that. And Mr. Maroc will talk a little bit more about the growth we've seen at the high school. So this is where we're sitting in A reading and early reading. You can see by the percentage, we're still hitting that about 50% mark in most of our grades, which means that's not going to be acceptable for Anago kids or Anago families. We have a path forward, you'll hear some of our principals talk about. Next year, they already are thinking about plans of this worked really well. I'm going to start that at the beginning of the year instead of waiting to winter because that hit a lot of our kids where they needed to be pushed. And we'll go from there as we start planning for the future. When you look, scroll down to the math portion, I put some graphs there. So sometimes graphs are a little bit easier to see. We want no orange on our graphs. Math, you'll see that we had more success from fall to spring than in A reading. We've done some targeted math work at the middle school that they'll talk about. But every grade from fall to spring, except for 10th grade and 8th grade again, made percentage growth. It's not enough growth, we know that. We're still sitting at some of those 50% mark, but we have a lot of grades at 40% or 30% not passing, which is better than our ELA. So we'll take a look at that and see what strategies we're using in math that maybe we can implement those instructional practices in our ELA as well. But I would like to make sure we understand that our teachers are working incredibly hard at each grade level and when you talk, listen to the principals talk as well, that every one of our teachers has these strengths. And that's sometimes why we have some movement in our elementary because we want to really prioritize the strengths that we're seeing in our teachers to make it sure it's hitting our students right where we need to make sure we're pushing them. Any questions on the district data? We're not where we want to be yet. We have some growing to do, a lot of growing in certain aspects. But we have a plan and it's not going to be fixed in a year. We know that. So we're going to continue on that plan, closing that gap year to year. 4K especially, you'll notice that a lot of them have significant growth, which is wonderful. So if we have that same growth next year, we're going to keep pushing them to that proficiency line. And it takes more than one year, which is why we need a system in place and not just really great individuals at certain grade levels. We need a system because we can't close that gap alone in one year's time. Okay? So I'm going to invite Mr. Zamzo up for East Elementary, and he's going to walk through his data, and then we will go from there.
All right. So the data charts are spread out in what I put together. So I think it would be hard for me to tell you to page down, page up. So what I did, I, I took the percentages of students that were scoring below grade level. And looking at both reading and math, we overall showed positive gain. In reading, it was 11% and in math, it was 8%. If I look at reading, all, all the grade levels but two were able to produce the fall to spring reduction in percent of kids below grade level. We had a, a teacher out in kindergarten for maternity leave from about November to February. And that was, that, that's an impact. It's so critical to have teachers in the classroom. And in those situations, you have a long-term sub and they try to do their best. They did rebound from winter to spring with a 15% gain overall, 15% growth. So that, that was a big positive. In math, we also showed a fall to spring gain, or reduction, I should say, in a percent of kids below the grade level. And even in our, in our SLO that we identified early in the year in our school improvement plan, we saw a 10% movement towards that goal. We didn't reach the goal, but we made almost a 10% in both reading and math. To me, it's kind of early to present this data. It wouldn't be better to have some, a chance to talk with the teachers about it. We just finished up catching up kids that missed the assessment. We were, I was talking with our third grade team this afternoon about our new resource and how our new resource into reading has a beginning of the year and the end of the year assessment. And we were looking at Lexile scores that that assessment produced and the Lexile scores that FastBridge produced. And we were wondering, is there alignment there? Are we seeing the same data? And for the most part, we did. So it would be nice to maybe look further at maybe a different data source and another data source besides FastBridge to measure growth. I mean, we're coming to you and this is the only data source that we're giving you right now. So in addition to the new resource, I think it's important to bring that up again. Our teachers introduced a new resource and assessments. So weekly assessments just were not part of the routine. And this was new for staff, new for students. So I want to show you an example of one of our first grade teachers, Mrs. Behrens. She put this chart together to help kids see their progress. So you can see from left to right, beginning of the year, not so great. But as the year progressed, they would monitor their own progress in the classroom and celebrate when they met their goal. So you have little first graders doing weekly formative assessments on a Chromebook, which, you know, is new to them. And you think about it, they're just coming out of kindergarten into the fall, asking them to do those assessments. So it's a learning curve for them, even how, just talking to Mrs. Behrens, how, how do we even teach them how to take an assessment as a first grader? So a lot of learning this year. I was told to just speak on the highlights. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So like Mr. Zamzo said, we do a lot of assessments during the school day, formative assessments, things like that. We do just bring the screener to you guys and to the community because it is just the one that we can make sure we have some benchmark screeners throughout the year. But Mr. Zamzo is absolutely right. There's a lot of great successes that we're seeing. Ms. Behrens also showed me that her nonsense words were at the beginning of the year. Everyone except two students were red in her class. And she showed me at the end, everyone is blue except for two students. So she completely flipped it. So that's an example of like the successes and pockets that we're seeing. Those kids now have their nonsense words when they go to the next grade level. Man, are they going to continue that process and build upon that decoding and be able to read decodables? So it's pockets of it, like I've talked about all year. And now how do we streamline that greatness that we have in this district so that we can see it on a system level? Ms. Smith is not here today, so I'm going to do her North data for you. So if you want to look at her North data for A reading, you will see from winter to spring, there's been some good growth over that proficiency line and reducing the number of students who are not proficient. There's still some work around 4K, K and 1 at North Elementary. And some growth we see from second grade and third grade that is moving in the right direction from fall to spring as well. In math, you'll see 4K math made grade gains from the beginning of the year till springs with a 22% growth. We have some other growth, second grade as well made 33% growth in math. So that's one thing you want to look at and say, okay, second grade at North, what are you doing? What were you consistent on? What strategies were you using that we can pinpoint and say, if we did this with all of our second graders, what would that look like? Again, that data point is a flashlight for us so that we can really hone in and make sure that we're doing it for all students. And they made an 8% gain as a school for A math. Any questions on North's data? So all of our elementary schools are using inter-reading, like Mr. Zamzo said, the same resources, they have the same opportunities this year. We made sure that there was equitable resources at every school so that they all got the same opportunity. All right, I will have Ms. Maddick come up for West Elementary.
Dustin, I have a handy bookmark at the.
Oh, he's got it ready. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, good evening, everyone. As you look up on the board, if you pay attention to that right-hand column, everything is green. So it's very exciting to see growth from the fall to the spring in A reading for the positive and of course, in A math as well. Ironically, we grew 14% in both A math and A reading. So that is our, our biggest celebration. Keep going, Dustin, and that totals on the bottom. Thank you. Perfect. But the biggest shout out goes to our staff, anywhere from an instructional assistant to our teachers. Every single person latched on to wind time, skills groups, boot camp. Every staff member received feedback, whether they were instructional assistant giving an intervention or a staff member that is giving tier one instruction. Every single person in our building has the desire to excel. And that is, that is why we have the green up there. Something that, you know, Amy mentioned was the goal setting, something that we started in the winter, similar to what Tom shared. It's something we want to start instead of in the winter, in the middle of the year, is at the beginning of the year. This is like a little kindergartner goal setting. So this person sat down with their teacher, hey, this is what you got in the fall. Here was your winter score. What do you think you're going to get in the spring? And obviously, it's a little exciting number there with some different colors. But every single student from kindergarten through third grade sat down with their teacher and they goal set, they set a goal around their FastBridge score. We just did A reading for now. Hopefully, we'll jump into math, but this is just a sample. And then as the students got older, obviously, it got more complicated. So this is one that looks, looks like a second grade sample. So that is something we would start immediately next school year is students knowing their learning, knowing where they're at, knowing exactly what they're striving for. Because any student or any person that knows where they're at and knows what the end goal is, is going to work harder to, to get to that finish line. So that is definitely something we would start at the beginning of the year. And another celebration to share is we've had a boot camp with eight of our first graders. And four out of eight of those first graders grew an entire color band. So if they were yellow, they went all the way up to green. If they were red, they went all the way up to yellow. So that was a second dose of instruction that those students got. And seven out of eight of those students grew exponentially. And unfortunately, one student stayed the same, but we'll work on that differently next time. The other things that we'll start right away is 4K skills groups. It's similar to our wind time or intervention time. They're kind of going around into different centers. They have an instructional assistant that is also giving instructional lessons for these students in reading and in math. So we would start that right away as well. Tom talked about our school goal. So our SLO was to grow by 20% in A reading. And we're just shy six points there, so we will keep digging in for next school year. Something that we will do at the tier one support is we'll continue the staff feedback and we'll continue coaching feedback, but we'll really dig into intentional teaching. So I always think about coaching. So if someone has nailed their free throw, we're not going to keep practicing their free throw. We're going to move to the three-pointer. But if somebody hasn't aced their layup yet, we're going to keep working on their layups. So depending on what skills the students need, we'll break that down, get some more tier one instruction in the classroom. And then our goal will be to continue, we have passwords when kids come in. And we just want to fill the hallways and we've cleared the cubbies. So we want to put sight words up there and just have signs and things that kids can read all of the time, no matter where they are in our school. Anything else I should add? Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Okay, so Teal and I are going to tag-team. He has a little sheet to hand out for you, similar to what you have. But then we just added a piece of, a graph that shows from last year to this year. So some Packer colors, last year was yellow and this year was green. So that's on the backside of the sheet. So just looking, I'll focus on the A-reading and Teal will discuss more of the math aspect. Very similar to what everybody else has talked about. We need to thank our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our title staff, our coaches. Amy Strasberg has helped us all learn a lot and how to adjust. Our seventh grade, we had to do a lot of adjusting with our language arts. And that was pivotal. And we are very proud of all of our scores, but really proud of our seventh grade score. They went through a lot of changes throughout this year. So shout-out to all of our staff. So you can see, we do have mainly green in both the, the reading and the math. Next year, we're making some changes to our schedule. Our fourth and fifth grade had specials in the morning. It was a little bit choppy schedule with our language arts and math. Next year, our fourth and fifth graders will be staying in their classroom full morning till about 11, 12 o'clock. They'll have all their language arts and math that whole morning time. Then they'll have their specials and their win in the afternoon. So we feel that is going to help, along with many of the other things that Tom and Amy and Anita have already talked about with different types of goal-setting. We did a lot of goal-setting this year, but not enough. We definitely want, we did things really at, you know, midpoint. And we start kind of talking about what should we do more intentionally? And that is something that we need to just put into place right away next year. Another thing with our reading and our math and even our forward exam, we're just really thinking about how to be more intentional around testing. There's a lot of test anxiety with students and we always need to think about that. So just really being intentional about like coming up with a test mode. We're going to be in this mode and we need these many teachers in the classroom to help with the testing aspect. Because a lot of kids, they do, they want to just click through because they want to just get through some of these things. So as we learn more about that collectively, there are definitely pieces that we can put into place that will help be more systematic with our testing aspect as well. Teal and I did some motivational videos for the students. I'm not really sure if they motivated them, but we got some good feedback from that, too. We kind of just talked about like you're facing the giants and you're just like some different clips and just trying to get kids to think that they can do it. And that really, they've already alluded to that. You know, like confidence is a huge factor. You have to believe that you can do that to improve your test scores to, in anything, in, in, at any aspect of our, our life. So that was something new that we did and we're going to keep working through that. And I thought about cutting my hair off if we had a certain score, but I didn't want to go that far yet. But maybe that's something to do next year. But it's, it is crazy. Kids, kids get motivated by that stuff, right? So just kind of thinking through what that really looks like. And one thing that we really focused with ELA before we get to on the math, CBM, our fluency scores have increased tremendously. And you're not seeing that up there. But one thing that we added in was fluency reads. So Jamie Kirsch through coaching, she coached our teachers with cycles of doing one-minute reads with the kids every single day. And you could tell where, we started with fifth grade first, then it was like sixth grade and then fourth and seventh. And you can tell that our fifth grade, they started it right away, early March. Their CBM scores are crazy. So their fluency, their rate of being able to read is, has been very effective. And again, something we will start right away. And a lot of the things that are happening in elementary, they're bringing them, we'll be moving that up to the high school, I mean, up to the middle school. Reading Horizons, Read Live, a lot of different interventions. We saw some really great success. We didn't have a ton of training in some of these things, but we got through it and we believe in it and we see the data that has showed us that these things do help. And that collective efficacy is really where it's at with our teachers.
Very similar for a lot in math. You guys have the data there in front of you. We were super proud of both the winter to spring growth and our fall to spring growth. I would say there's probably four major things that we focused on, one being just that strong universal instruction for all learners, including the small group in our classrooms, a focus on the engagement for students and collaboration within our PLCs, along with the shifts in our math standards in which our teachers worked and some professional development with Paige Richards along throughout the year. I want, the second thing would be our, our win interventions, our tiered interventions for our tier-two and our tier-three groups. We feel those were strong. In math in particular, that's an area where we want to continue to gain strategies and interventions that we can use, along with the progress monitoring that goes along with that. And then a lot of our conversations in our PLCs go along with those progress monitoring results each week and how we're using that data to push those students forward the next week. So we want to focus in on that. We implemented vocabulary sorts in March. So that would have been for our winter to spring growth and the overall growth. And those vocabulary sorts, Amy helped us out a lot with those. All of our math teams chose words from the standards at that particular level to, to go through that sort with the students. And we continue to practice those. And we felt that those helped our students really gain an understanding of some of those major vocabulary words. We, we don't have a ton, a ton of students that are proficient in reading. So focusing on those means when they get to the test and they see words like area and perimeter, even though those are simple, two times two or two plus two plus two plus two, to solve that, if they don't understand those words that go along with it, then they're not going to get those right. So we chose to do that and we thought that our students had a much better understanding around the vocabulary, which led to some high results for our testing. And then that goal-setting and motivation piece that Heather talked about for you guys. On the back there, you can see just that summary for both A-reading and A-math. I'll just touch on the A-math. We started this fall with 51% of our students scoring below grade level at the middle school. And we have reduced that to now just 40% of our students scoring below grade level. Those two graphs that we put on there at the end. In short, what we really wanted you guys to be able to see from that is we talk a lot about students below the line. We talk a lot about tier-two and tier-three interventions, moving those students up. And those are super important. But we also don't want to forget about students who are already proficient and how our regular instruction, our universal instruction within the classroom is pushing and moving those students forward as well. And also the win groups that we have those students involved with as well. So just focus on the, the low risk in the college pathway and both of those. The yellow is representing last year. And then the green is representing this year. And you can see the huge spike in the college pathway for both the A-reading and the A-math. So we added those on there just for you guys to see that increase from last year to this year. Anybody questions at all about the middle school data?
Do we get to see the videos?
Yes.
I'm sure they're floating around there somewhere, you'll find them.
Good job.
Bobby, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to pull this off because I can't bend over. I did watch that video, Teal. It was pretty impressive, actually. All right, Dustin, so if you, okay, you're already on there. So if you look on the right-hand side, you can see from fall to spring in A-reading, like Amy had talked about, we're at negative 12. Plus six in ninth grade, negative four in 10th grade, zero with a total of negative three. So we have some work to do. But if you look on the left-hand side, you can see from winter to spring, we're all in the green. So we have made a lot of progress from winter to spring. And just to talk a little more about that, kind of like everyone had stated before, from the elementary to the middle school, we also at the high school set goals in the winter, nothing in the spring. But Mike Wanniger and our instructional team set goals with our advisors in their advisory time. And this was the first time we've ever done something like that. And if you look at that research from John Hattie, he's a well-known educational researcher, he talks about typical growth and point four, sorry, point four is typical growth in that goal-setting research, it talks about point 6.8 for, for growth. So if you look at typical growth for a year, point four, in Hattie's research with point 6.8, you can see that by implementing goals, we're actually above by 2.8. So it's something that we really wanted to focus on this year. And then our SLO goal was around A-reading. And so we did fall short. We wanted to reduce from 49% students below average to 39%. And again, we did fall growth, but we did, did fall short, but we did see a lot of growth again from that winter to spring. A few other things that we focused on, we're looking at again that data and then implementing that into our spring of next year. So there was a lot of teachers who talked about, when are we going to get our goal sheets back? There were some students that approached us, when are we going to get our goal sheets back? So it's something that if you've been in the high school, there's probably not a lot of talk about FastBridge or what my FastBridge scores were until this winter into spring. So it's pretty exciting that there are kids talking about what their goals are and advisory teachers talking about, what can I do to help support my students in advisories to reach their goals? And that's just not something that's been talked about at the high school, at least since I've been here, and I've been here for a pretty long time. So it's pretty neat to see that not only, only is our staff digging in with our students, but our students are digging in with our students around those goals. And then just to talk about, a little bit what we're also doing, as Amy talked about our eighth grade, which had some of the lowest scores in math and reading, what we're looking at is setting them up for success with a different type of schedule for next year, that we can focus more on what we can do to support them in our systems that we're implementing to just help a stronger foundation for success for them. We talked about interventions and what we can do for them and the rest of our ninth through 11th grade students. And just a more direct, for, direct intervention, we have what's called Pride Time. And it's very effective, however, it's not directly intervening with some of our students that are struggling the most. So we want to look at that and what we can do to, again, directly intervene to help those students. And then one last thing I just want to share is that, again, we're going to take this and goal-set in the spring so that we can goal-set for the spring, winter, or sorry, fall, winter, and then spring. And then the data that we've collected this year has been the best ever. Again, like I taught before, we hovered around like 78, probably to 82% of data collected. And this year, in the, in the winter, I know we were at 90, I think, 8% of students tested. We fell a little short of that this spring, but we were still in the high 90s, which, again, it's the best data that we've ever collected at the high school, which I think speaks volume. And Mike and Jamie Kirsch and Cindy Horek really helped to get all of our kids tested so we could get the best accurate data possible. And then Dustin, if you just want to scroll up, again, we did not focus, or sorry, scroll down. My fault. We did not focus our SLO on math, but we would like to focus that also on math for next year. Our math scores were a little higher, negative one and negative two, negative one for eighth grade, negative two for 10th grade. But again, if you look at winter to spring, all positives. So a lot of work to be done, but a lot of growth as well. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
So regarding the Pride Time, so this year is the, our first year with, with the new schedule, right? How would you, how do you compare that with two years past? Did it work better?
So I think it, with any, something new, there's always some pluses and some, some things that you need to improve on. Looking at our new schedule, I think the advisory time, when you talk to many students, it was a plus for a soft start for many students. And then jumping into Pride Time, a lot of the feedback from the staff is that students can look at what they need for the day and accomplish that right away in the morning and not try to focus on that in the afternoon. So it's something that we looked at on what we can do to help our ninth through 11th graders. But then also, what can we do differently and kind of, almost mirror like the eighth grade, or sorry, the seventh grade and the sixth grade? With, and like Teal and Heather had talked about, win time and win interventions, that more direct intervention. And what can we do to help support our, our students? So nothing is finalized for a schedule at the high school for next year, but we're looking at what is working this year and what can we improve for next year.
Sure. Do, do you feel like the sports schedule impacts a lot of, of test results?
Like what kids leaving early and things like that?
Yes, because if they have their core classes in the afternoon and stuff, a lot of, a lot of times, they have to leave early for sports. So sometimes they miss an awful lot of school because of that.
Correct, especially spring sports when it's like golf and things like that. I think no matter where you have some of those things, there's always going to be pluses and negatives. I think those students that are, that are in sports, for the most part, they're excelling and they're intrinsically motivated to do well and they find a way to happen. I'm not saying it doesn't happen that way, that they're, that doesn't negatively affect them, but it's something that we talked about as well in our schedule.
Okay. My last question is regarding math, are they, what, what type of scoring are you using? Is it the standardized scoring or, and I apologize, I'm probably saying this wrong, where it's proficient grading? Yes, grading, yes, thank you.
You want to talk more about it? Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I can never...
No, that's okay. You're talking about the FastBridge tests?
No, I'm talking about our, our district.
Or in class.
Yeah, the classes.
Yeah, percentage-based. I know our foreign language is working on standard-based. They do a lot of standard-based grading.
Okay.
So we're working on that as a whole school because we do need to make sure that we're addressing how we assess our students and making sure that we're doing the correct assessments to make sure that, obviously, the grades match the learning that's happening. And it's not just task-oriented, that our students are learning and then showing that knowledge, meeting those standards that the DPI sets out.
Okay, so are we using this, the standard scoring grading then?
So not all content areas at the high school are doing the same thing. So our foreign language department is using standard-based grading. They've been using it for a while. I know some other content areas before I got here have kind of moved into that a little bit more. What we want to do is get all of our, our staff into standard-based grading for our students so that it shows the learning and the mastery of a standard and not just the completion of homework or tasks. We want to know as our student leaves this content area, that they have mastered these standards, can show their learning to the level of rigor that we need them to show it and be ready for the next content area. To change assessments is a big process. It's like when you say change a report card, everyone kind of takes a big breath because it is a long process. It's not going to be overnight to change some of those pieces. It's a lot of learning on staff end, a lot of learning for families as well.
Sure. So I guess my end thought was, how is that affecting like the FastBridge testing, right? So like, you know, if, if kids are getting, you know, letter grades on their homework, does that help with them on this test? Or, you know, I mean, to kind of, so that they realize where they're at, I guess? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I wouldn't necessarily correlate the, the grades in a, a content area with FastBridge. So FastBridge, A-reading and A-math, we can have two options to look at norm criterias or benchmark. We choose to do benchmark because it's that straight line of either you're reading or you're not, right? And then we can dig down into those skills. This A-reading, when you start taking the test, you take the test and as you, as a student, get questions right, it bumps you up to different ranges and then it kind of bumps you down to kind of see where you land, as in this is how far you've gone in your A-reading skills. And so it tests comprehension, fluency, morphology, prefixes, suffixes, and it kind of moves you on that continuum. So we could have like a third grade student at some seventh grade questions if they're really high and they keep getting those questions correct. So when we look at that, that really shows us where they are around all the components of reading and math, not just like a select in algebra, I'm learning equations and I'm learning variables. It's a little bit different. So I wouldn't connect grades to FastBridge. FastBridge is just a benchmark screener so we can get, like I said, that flashlight so we know as educators and as a district what systems and plans we need to put into place. Grades would be then that content area and that depths of knowledge for the standards in which that student is, is showing their knowledge.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right.
So just to finish up our data, thank you guys for listening. I know it's a lot as we go through each school. But one thing I will say is our teachers get to walk into summer feeling very proud of themselves, putting in a lot of work, trying a lot of new things, some things thrown at them that they maybe didn't want to try at the beginning, but wholeheartedly accepted and did their absolute best on. And as you can hear, that excitement around academics and that excitement around data, that's what we're hearing in our students. That's what we're hearing in our staff as they're talking about it. And we didn't hear that, you don't hear that in every school district. So that's such a positive as we move into summer and look at to next year, is that we have some excitement around data. We have excitement around growth and setting goals and being able to achieve that. That's a lot of the battle to make sure our students are seeing the, the necessary qualities of taking a FastBridge-like screener. So I just hope, I just wanted to highlight that because you don't get that level of excitement over data and new plans that we're thinking about for next year to make our kids great. There's not any teacher that's going to say these scores are good enough. There's not any educator in Anago that's going to say, we're good, let's stay at 60% not passing. But man, are we going to have some plans to make sure that we don't stay there. So thank you for all of your time. Does anyone have any last questions around the data?
I don't have questions, but I just want to share a shout-out to all the teachers and building admin and central for all the hard work. I felt my, my takeaway from this is... I felt my my takeaway from this is several things. There was adjustments to the math standards, there's weekly assessments that were new, there's new curriculum implemented. And the overarching theme was intentional data collection with intentional use behind it with action steps. So each level and each building shared out data collected and also what they learned from it or what they're going to expand on with that. And then schedule changes with four, five. In the past, I've asked Ms. McCann about a schedule change and I know that there's a lot of complexities that go into that. It's far more intense than what it seems on the surface, so shout out to that too. Again, looking at data collection, I'm assuming played a role because you reported on it tonight and the work that it takes of doing something like a schedule change also with the eighth graders as well. So a lot of strong takeaways and I really appreciate how the information gathered is being used and adjustments that are being made in real time and then prep for the future. So thank you to our staff.
Yeah, the staff is bar none that they will do whatever it takes for kids. Like when you ask them to do something, even if they think, oh, my goodness, what is that going to look like? They're all in for kids and that's what all you can ask for out of your staff, so we appreciate them.
I think the whole board would ditto Jill, what you have so eloquently stated for the wonderful support that our staff and the whole team of the administrative offices are doing to put our kids first in our district. Thank you. All right, moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping on to Mrs. Oginski.
Before we move on, I do want to give another shout out to our staff because when you look at educators in general, teachers are very much rule followers and they want to do the best that they can do. And when you throw a new resource in the mix and they are approaching that unknown, it can be very taxing. And I think that our staff embraced it along with the changes around win time and the new resources and the new interventions, and they did it with grace. And I think that's helped with a lot of the results we've received. So hats off to all of our staff, not just the teachers, but our support staff as well. So moving forward, the next report is the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and I believe Mr. Lyerman is present, if anyone has questions about his report. Okay, no questions, then we will move on to the superintendent report. And the first item on my report will be a presentation from our team that we recognize for representing Anago so well at CISA nine. They're going to do a presentation for the board around what universal design for learning is. So please welcome Alison King to share some information with you. And then I will continue with my superintendent report.
All right, so hi there again. My name's Mike Wanniger, I'm the instructional coach at the high school. And this was the team that I worked with this year, one of the teams that I worked with, but this was the team that we focused around UDL and trial work with. Mary Umland, Mike Blood, Brendan Galeotto, and Jerry Roden, representing social studies, history, math, English between eighth grade through all the way up to 11th grade because Mike had an 11th grade classroom. So first, I'm just going to briefly talk about what UDL kind of is and just give you a real quick snapshot of it. I could, it's a giant framework and I could talk about it for for a very long time. But just to kind of give you a little idea before I jump into what we did with our trial work this year. And at the end, I'm going to open up the floor for our, for the teacher team to like kind of share out some of their anecdotes and some of their takeaways from from the project. So what is UDL? UDL stands for universal design for learning. It's it's a framework that's that's out there right now to promote these different things that I have highlighted up there on the board. It focuses on intentionally designing lessons, focusing outcomes for both students and teachers and focusing those lessons that we design on those outcomes themselves. So kind of just taking, to explain those two points, taking some of the vagueness away from a lesson for both the student and the teacher. Mathematics said it excellently before, if if somebody knows what they're learning and what the end goal is, it's going to help so, so, so much more. We're not just, maybe we're not just writing a paragraph today, maybe we're learning how to write the claim in the paragraph today and and we're going to analyze how well we did that. That that could be an example of of a target or a goal or an outcome for a student. And to go with that, also tracking like a bunch of the stuff that a lot of people presented already today was UDL related, the progress charts that were shared out here already today. Those, that goes into goal setting and showing students and any kind of a learner really their progress towards completing that goal and creating success criteria along the way of of reaching that goal. All of that is going to promote hopefully more understanding and engagement from from the learner. And that's my last point there, increasing understanding, engagement, and buy-in from the students. I highlighted the the word engagement because really this again is a giant framework, but it really comes down to looking at how engaged the learners are in the classroom. We talk about in this team and and in other sessions that I've been to with UDL, what does engagement really look like for students that are sitting in a classroom? Are are they are they intrinsically bought into that lesson and they, do they know why they're doing it? So anything that we do in UDL, there are all kinds of strategies that we can apply, but these are some of the main points that we're trying to achieve when we get to that. So Dustin, if you want to move on. So I will move on to the the trials process of this. So the UDL is like the giant overall educational framework and the trials process is something that I'm leading with this team to kind of show us some of those things and do some learning as professionals along the way and apply those strategies and skills to the classroom and to track the data going along with those strategies and skills and see how it's going to affect affect the data. So there's four trials. It started with a baseline way back in, I think we did baseline at the end of October, beginning of November. Baseline data just, I came and walked into the classroom without saying anything to anybody, students or teachers, and I just watched the students and I, it's it's all student focused. I I literally grade them for how engaged they are in the classroom based on a few criteria that you'll see here in the next couple of slides. And then after that, there's three more trials throughout the rest of the year, we completed these trials. Each trial has a different focus and they're all based on PDSA cycles, plan, do, study, act cycles, where we get together as a team, we do some learning together, we design a lesson together. And again, with that intentional design around a target, around an outcome, we give the lesson and then we track data on the lesson to see how it affected the students. So like I said, each trial had a different kind of a UDL focus. These are kind of the the big stalwarts of of UDL. The first trial was all centered around learning targets. So having, a lot of people call them different things, we call them learning targets here, they're learning goals, learning outcomes in other districts. It's all the same thing, trying to focus, why are we doing this lesson? What is the skill that you are trying to learn? What is the skill that that you are trying to achieve as a learner? And then the second trial is focused on clarifying that target for the student and really driving that target home along with self-assessment of that target. And the third one was team choice, and we actually chose choice, I'll explain that in a little bit. We could have chose any one of a plethora of different UDL focuses, but we chose choice and giving students choices in the classroom. And then all of this work is conducted in in a teacher work group. It's, we didn't call it a PLC, but I I really think the the outcome of of what happened by the end of the year really felt like a very effective professional learning community. So that's kind of an overview of our of our process. So these are the criteria that I graded students on when I came into teachers' classrooms. The engagement criteria are set up through the through the program, those are concrete, those don't change. They are making personal choices, initiating and completing instructional tasks, working with others and participating in discussions. So as I read through each one of those, you can kind of visualize what each one of those might look like in a typical classroom and you can visualize some of the things that I might look for as I'm grading grading the students doing those things. And I think we could all agree that if they're doing a lot of those things in the classroom, it's probably going to lead to more effective learning. The academic criteria are criteria that our team came up with together. These are obviously more academically focused than just pure engagement. How we determine these is that we sat down as a team in November and we looked at all of our standards. So we have various grade levels and various different disciplines represented here. And a really great activity for anybody to do really is to sit down and look at everybody's standards on the screen and you start to see these pop out because these are similarities from all of those standards. These are, these are the real skills that we want students to do. Like I mentioned before, are, do we just want to write a paragraph or do we want to construct a viable argument within that paragraph? Like that's what we're actually doing when we're writing and it brings more focus on those. So constructing viable arguments, persevering and making sense of and solving problems, attending to precision and using evidence to determine cause and effect were something that we all agreed on could be found in any one of our disciplines at any grade level. If you could click forward, Dustin. So this is just a brief snapshot of a graph that this is representative of of all of our team members. I went into each classroom, I stayed with five students in each class throughout the entire year and I was in there a number, a many number of times and I I made quite a bit of observations on individual students. And this is what came out of that. As you can see, both the the tan bar represents the engagement criteria that I just talked about before. The blue bar represents the academic criteria that I talked about. I'm grading all of these on a four-point scale, four being the most engaged in that criteria and one being the least engaged in that criteria or not engaged in that criteria. And as you can see on the Y axis, that's the percent of observations that were, that I graded at a three or a four from those students. So the highest levels of engagement in each of those criteria. And we were very, very happy with with our data. I think everybody could agree with that. As I said, this is an average, each each teacher can see their own graph that looks like this and can see the individual numbers along the way. But I put this, all of the team's data into this graph itself and I think it speaks for itself. When we were in the baseline phase, we we weren't getting a lot of high numbers, high three and four numbers in the engagement and the academic criteria. And every trial that we implemented with every UDL outcome just made it better, so. So are there, you can flip to the next one, Dustin, are there any questions about the process before we move on to to teacher experiences? Okay. So with that, I just kind of wanted to open it up to to our team. My my thought was just sharing one of your biggest takeaways from the year or sharing any personal anecdotes that you might have of of you see, of seeing how the process worked in your classrooms.
Mike, you're volunteering.
I'm afraid to stand up and talk. That's also why I put everything down here so I wouldn't go over time. A couple of things that were really interesting to me going through this. One of the final trials I had was students talking about a historical situation where they had to use historical context, which in the state standards is one of our highest standards. And this is with a group of freshmen. We were talking about how the Renaissance impacted the Reformation and students had to make a claim and defend that claim about like something from that time period. What about the context, what had been set up by the the Renaissance helped the Reformation take place? So we picked a really high standard to begin with. And I was like, well, that's a tough one. And having taught a lot of AP over the years, advanced placement classes, I was like, this is going to be a challenge. But it was a little bit later in this, we had some practice at it. By the time we got done in my freshman class, I only had two students who did not fully participate. They were out of class or gone for a couple of reasons. So they were able to do it later, but when Mike came in to observe, it was really quite interesting. What I noticed a great deal of is the number of students, because I sat down and talked with them, they had to do this verbally. So they made a claim and then they had to defend their claim and use evidence, which were some of the things that we had listed up there. And I was expecting a freshman level response kind of, which is not what I should have been because students did a fantastic job of using content level vocabulary, bringing up the historical references in the people they were talking about in the effects of things. Almost all of them are talking about the printing press being important and and talking about the the Martin Luther and his, you know, role in all this as an individual. So we had this really amazing response from students and they were making some very high level claims. And the first student who talked raised his hand and he made his claim and the rest of the class was kind of listening and to see how this goes, went, huh, like, how is you going to do this? And I said, defend what you're telling me. And he dove in and the rest of the class was watching and you can kind of see the eyes light up and all of a sudden things started to make more and more sense and that they were going to be well-prepared. Students were working with each other, they had time to go over this and discuss it with each other, so they had time to practice. One of the people I'd like to give a little bit of a shout out to is I have a teaching assistant, Braden Geiger, and he is in my classroom for that class, he's a senior, he wants to be a social studies teacher. And he went around to each of the students and kind of did a sit down with them and gave them a little bit of feedback and asked some questions, did a fantastic job, which as a senior in high school and wanting to do this, I'm like, yes, because we need good students like him who are going to be willing to do this stuff. As a matter of fact, this past week, he's been helping me, we were team teaching. So I got a senior in high school who's helping to team teach causes of World War I, things like that, so it's been fantastic. One of the really neat things for us, I think, was having Mike come in, having time to sit down and to take some just unbiased data for us because you kind of have in your own head how class goes and we all looked at and went, oh, well, that's an interesting take, I didn't really think of it that way. And by the end, you can see from those results that students were doing the things that we didn't really necessarily, at least in my class, I didn't expect them to have ready and how excited they were to show they had mastered those vocab terms, how they had mastered those those concepts and wanted to show those to everybody. So overall, I thought the program was really good. I wasn't sure what to expect when I started it, but being able to sit with teachers that are not necessarily in our field of study for like a PLC really helped us to get an outside view, which was really useful, all of a sudden you're like, oh, it's not just content experts talking about content that we're already familiar with, it was hearing other ideas. And that made a big difference, I think, as well. So overall, I thought it was a really, really good experience and I'm looking forward to implementing more specific targeted lessons with all of my classes last year, having had that experience and being able to work with them. That's what I had to say. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Umland. I've been a teacher in the district for thirty-four years and you're never too old to learn. You think, you know, you've been at it for a while, but it's surprising that when you get together and you work with your peers, that how much more that you not only can have personal growth for what you want to do in teaching, but how much you can bring your students from where you see them when they come in and how far you can bring them as they go along throughout the school year. For me, the biggest takeaway was designing specific learning targets and really helping the students learn why they're doing what they're doing. Why is this important? And one of my responsibilities as an eighth grade teacher teaching civics is the citizenship exam. And the students have to pass the citizenship exam in order to graduate the high school. It's one of the graduation requirements and it's very daunting for them. But as I went through and learned from Mike and worked with my peers on how to design more specific learning targets, I found that every single student was engaged in the lessons every day. And that was so exciting to me. A lot of times you hear teachers will say, I just can't get them to do anything. And that's just, that's not an option. They're here to learn so that they can do and show others what they know. And then using this experience with the UDL, it was just amazing at how motivated students were because they they were taking part in the decision-making. They were making choices of how they wanted to learn. They were making realizations of where they were to where they wanted to go. And just seeing the interpersonal growth. And just seeing the interpersonal growth and the happiness that, especially from 13- and 14-year-olds who always kind of come off like, "School is not important." But to see that, you know, interpersonal growth for kids in eighth grade, that, that is really something. And I also have to thank my team members as well because we, we, I think, grew as a team, coming together, sitting down, talking to each other. And that's really what education is all about on the teacher professional level, is to grow together, to make yourself do better for the children so that they can do better for other people. So, I thought it was very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
So, my name is Brendan Galliotto. And so, for math, math being my discipline, I really thought personal choice, that third trial that we did, that showed the most engagement and academic success from the trial, really for the whole team, was probably the most important. It's my biggest takeaway from the UDL trials that I did. I kind of sat down with Mike Wanniger when we originally thought it up and decided this is the criteria we want to focus on. And I sat down and said, "Okay, how am I going to make every lesson in this chapter have personal choice? How am I going to take this idea and really frame it around a whole chapter and a whole lesson that students are going to want to know?" And that kind of started on little minor things, just, "Hey, here's your warm-up problem for the day. Can you do problem A or B?" And I would tell them, "Problem A is the basics. Here's, you know, what I want you to know. You can choose this if you just want me to help you on some basic stuff. Here's problem B. This is a lot closer to your harder test question that has a lot more going on and I can help you with that if you want." And you'd be surprised that the majority always chose B. They never chose the easy option. They wanted me to give them feedback on this harder stuff. They never took the easy way out. So, it was something really impressive to see from them. And that was even on a macro scale where I would do whole-class lesson activities based on, "Let's choose which learning target from the chapter you want to focus on today." And they would go pick and they would always pick something that they weren't confident with because they wanted to learn what that was. And at the end of the chapter, I can say confidently, every student in my room had about a letter and a half grade bump from the normal. Every student that has a C, they got about a B or a B-plus on it. Every student who normally gets a B gets an A. It was my best test all year and I think solely due to the engagement I got from that one criteria that we focused on.
Wow. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am Jerry Roden. And they took all my answers, so. I suppose it's only, suppose it's only fitting that I would talk about adaptability a little bit then. But that was one of my takeaways from all of this is, I don't know about you, but when I grew up, when I went through school, it was, there was one goal. This is the skill you're trying to learn, here's what you have to do to do it, you either do it or you don't. And so, actually, that's kind of what I brought into all this. And as we've gone through this and working with Mike and working with my teammates here, I, I came to realize that there are ways to adapt some of these things so that there are choices, choices been mentioned. And so, so two things really, one being choices, but that ties in pretty directly to a connection to real-world opportunities too. That, again, as I was going through school, it was always, "Why are we reading Romeo and Juliet?" Well, because it's English class and that's what we do in English class. But what I've tried to emphasize to my freshmen is that we're not just doing this because it's what you do in English class. We are going into this text and trying to extract useful information from what can be a very challenging text. And if you think that you're not going to have to do that in the real world, kids who, who are college-track certainly get that they're going to need to do that. But I'm always trying to think about the kids who are more trades-oriented too, who don't see English as being for them. Oh, that's for those college kids reading the, the poetry and the novels. Really? What about blueprints? What about schematics? What about change orders? Do you think you got to read those and get that right? Those are big investments and those are high-stakes vocations. That seems to get their attention for a while. So, I have seen at least a, a bit of a boost in engagement that way. And I want to try to, Mike and I have talked, I want to try to incorporate a little bit more of that kind of material in our more traditional English materials next year, just to kind of reach where they are, where, where some of those kids are and to try to bring them along and see, yeah, it is, it's not so much about the text, it's about what, the skills that you can get from the text. And the texts are really just the vehicle for delivering those, so.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Are there any questions after the share-rolls?
I just want to say that I want to thank the five of you and especially the four for becoming a team and working together to feel good about yourselves as teachers, to help your students see why we actually teach English. And I didn't catch what math you were teaching.
I was teaching algebra II.
Ooh.
Juniors.
Okay. That's a toughie. Anyway, but again, thank you for taking the time. None of you had to do this and you chose to be part of this team and I appreciate what you've done for our kids because that's why, let's face it, that's why we're here too. It's about the kids. So, thank you.
I wanted to make that shout-out too for, for the team. They volunteered for this. I, I mean, I asked them initially and just told them about the opportunity and they volunteered for it. And we, all of our team debriefs, all of our meetings, most of them anyway, we had some that we, we were able to get in on PD days, but most of them were after school. And a lot of, a lot of time was spent after school talking with a group, trying to get Mike to get through his, his material as fast as, as fast as we could, so. Because I will go on and on about it. Yep, but yeah, so I wanted to have that shout-out too for the team.
I do want to add on and say thank you for modeling in front of the students, the discipline of working together as a team. Because don't think for a minute that maybe not all, but some of the students, if not most of the students, saw the five of you working together. And when they see the five teachers working together, then they become, "Hey, well, let's, we need to work together and we're seeing this modeled in front of us." So, thank you that you're, you're not saying, "Well, I'm a teacher, I don't need support of another teacher." You guys are, are living that out in front of the students. So, thank you very much for all of your extra hard work that you're doing.
Thank you.
I got to commend you. I taught civics and my kids engaged. Haven't had a former student who tapped me for civics in here. That can be a struggle.
Yeah.
And I just commend you, all of you for seeing educate, teaching as an educational journey. And thanks for doing that.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Oginski, we'll continue with you.
Okay. So, just a quick overview of the superintendent report. Our team has been very busy with interviews, getting staff hired. We're seeing some really great applicants in our candidate pool so far, so that's always wonderful to hear. And also a big shout-out to Ms. Studsreem. She has been participating in a lot, if not all, of the interviews that have to do with hiring, teaching staff, particularly at the high school. So, that takes a lot of extra time, so a special thank you to her for doing that for us as well. Another biggie, as we talked earlier, about how hard-working our staff are and that not just limiting that only to teachers, but our support staff in all capacities. So, we celebrated Staff Appreciation Week. Central Office sent cinnamon rolls to all the schools and they seemed to be, they went over very well and they were some very nice-looking cinnamon rolls. I was a little jealous. We didn't take any ourselves, but Central Office helped to deliver those to our buildings. And also, we allowed staff, once they were finished with things, for Professional Development Day in May, we allowed them to have an early release and that too was very well-received. So, just some special thank yous for the hard work that they put in because they're in the buildings every day, all day, and we certainly cannot do it without them. So, a special thank you to all of our staff once again. The biggest bullet on here is regarding the Facilities Task Force. That has taken up most of my time, as it has Mr. Leiderman and Mrs. Posmaner as well. We're spending a lot of time meeting and reviewing information and making sure we have accurate information, information to be able to communicate with our community around where we are with deferred maintenance costs and the potential of either a new elementary or renovating our current elementary building. So, that's been a lot. And just a reminder too, to everyone, that we are having a Facilities Task Force meeting May 23rd and it's going to be a big one, where we're going to hear some numbers our community has been asking. And we are at that point where we can share those numbers with everyone. And we're going to offer some free babysitting and a light supper so that people can come and get their questions answered and learn more about where we are in the process. And then the last bullet point, Mrs. Verhagen and I have been working through the support staff cuts. That is like the final round of all of the ESER grant going away. We may have one or two remaining. Those things are kind of up in the air and go closer to the end of the school year, though we hope that we have none, but we could have one or two remaining. But those people have been notified and also notified of where, what building they will be working in next year. So, that has caused a lot of angst and it's never a fun part of anyone's job to have to do that, but we also have to be fiscally responses, responsible and live within our needs. So, questions about the superintendent report?
Yes. Can you speak a little bit more on that last bullet point? I think the community would be appreciative to some additional information in terms of, I guess, feedback I hear often is that we have a lot of vacancies, yet we're cutting staff. So, I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more direct to that bullet point, but also maybe in addition to the bullet point, if it doesn't just, if answering the question isn't just specific to support staff cuts?
Sure. Yes, that, that's a great question. So, when we started the process, we had, we looked at positions that were created with ESER funds and as you all know, it's called licensure. So, when those decisions were made and we met with all of our staff, we told everyone, "Please watch for any postings, whether it's a licensed teacher or a instructional assistant. Please watch for any postings that we have. We encourage you to apply in because these were not performance-based cuts, they were simply budgetary cuts that we had to make." And again, it did depend on licensure, that played a big part because we got to make sure that we have licensed staff in front of our students. So, if people have the right license, they are encouraged to apply. And there could be some openings now because there could have been resignations after the fact, after those cuts were made, which left openings for other people to apply for. But some of it could also be dependent upon the licensure thing as well. But that is a great question. And I can see where it would be confusing if, if we have positions open that we are trying to hire for, but yet we had to cut staff. It doesn't necessarily mean that an elementary teacher can teach a high school math course. So, they're not always interchangeable.
Thank you.
You're very open.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Oginski in the superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item five, Board Action, letter A. Second reading of Policy 2271.01, Start College Now. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the second reading of Policy 2271.01, Start College Now.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I would just encourage anyone that was at the meeting on May 6th, I was out of tone. So, I know we talked about this during the first reading, but if anybody else had anything they wanted to add, Glenn, whoever.
I can speak to it, Bobby. Are you asking for that?
Sure.
Okay. So, the reason that this, this policy, policy is coming up for a second reading is because we were not following policy with one of our welding groups. And if we were to go back to start following policy, it would actually be a hindrance to our students and that's never something that we ever want to do. Because of the offering at NTC for the welding program, it's important that we change this policy to allow students in that cohort to participate.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor for the second reading of Policy 2271 dot zero one? All right, hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. You may cast your vote. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Letter B, Second Reading of Neola Updated Policies for the Board, 33 dash one. I would be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the second reading of the Neola Updated Policies for the Board, 33 dash one.
Motion has been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
Also, again, I was not present at the May 6th meeting, however, this group of updated policies had already gone to the board and were looked at item by item, policy by policy. So, I think we were ready at that point to move it to the second reading.
Even down to line by line?
Correct.
In the policy committee, yes. Are there any discussion with the second reading of the Neola Updated Policies, 33 dash one? Hearing no discussion, the vote is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Letter C, Consideration to Approve the CISA IX Contract. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the CISA IX contract for the 2024-2025 school year in the amount of $276,795.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
No, I believe this went to committee. I just saw a college one offhand, so if, if anybody, Dave would like to speak on it or not?
The only thing I had asked for, Kelly, was, because we knew that some of the things had been cut as the school year went along. What did we pay, what was the price last year for us when we started out?
No, Kelly, I can speak to that if you want. If you look, Dr. Bardo, at the topic summary sheet, if you will click that link, there is a list. When we brought this to committee, we had asked that we bring back the expenditures for this current year because we did cut a lot out. And the 23-24 bill is about $200,000 in total. But if you look at the 24-25 contract, some of those things, some services that might, for the 4K, we think that those are going to be covered under a grant. And depending upon our hiring capacity, we may not need some of those. Most of those cost from outside services that are required through either people's services or special education that we have to provide for students. And if we can hire those people, it's always more fiscally responsible for the district to do that and that's our preferred method. However, we don't often have that opportunity, so if not, that's where those added costs come in, in the, the contract for next year.
So, do we receive an adjustment if we would hire something like the speech-language pathologist or the, we would receive an, a renewed adjustment from CISA nine?
That's a great question, Bobby. Yes, they only charge us for what we use, so if we were to get underway in the school year and decide we don't need everything?
Right.
They're, they're very flexible with us around that. Yeah, we get charged just for what we use.
One more piece, in addition to just the overall services, the purchase services around special ed and things, when we came to the district in August, there was 110
When we came to the district in August, there was a hundred and ten extra days that were added on to the contract with just extra consultants or different PD and things like that, and we moved that down to forty. It would have been less, but some of those had already been used. So we tried to eliminate as many initiatives as we possibly could to streamline things for our staff as well as be fiscally responsible with where those extra days were.
Thank you.
I'm just going to let you guys know, I'm adding the, uh, just an Excel spreadsheet in there that kind of goes hand in hand, just last year and this year, so it's a lot easier to read. So I'm going to find that for you. CISA.
And it's linked in there, Michelle, I believe, on the top of the summary sheet.
Right, but it's not the Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, the Excel.
While Michelle is looking at that, is there any other discussion about this?
Okay, they're in there. I have to do it differently. I just add this, this Excel spreadsheet to it. How do I share it? Do you share it? Share it, make it. Put it on the.
The information is coming.
I feel like I'm just going to hang on. Because the topic summary sheet is a PDF.
Can you just say what the number was?
Well, there's like all different, you might want to see like what the costs were.
I, I'm interested in the total. Because I know the original sheet that we would have approved last year would have been, I'm guessing, higher, but I'm not sure.
That's correct. It was much higher.
So the total, so looking at the sheet that she's going to send you, um, we pay it in quarters. So we've currently paid three quarters for this school year. So each quarter, the first one was about $60,000, another one was $60,000, then it dropped to $43,000 when we cut some things that we didn't need. And then we're estimating the last quarter to be around the same, so total about $200,000 for this school year.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor of approving the Season Nine contract? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Destin, and the motion carries. Letter D, Consideration to Approve AP Principal Position. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the creation of the position for Associate Principal at Anago High School.
Motion's been made by Dr. Bardo. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, basically, again, we're looking at getting the right licensures in place, and this would give a licensed, thirded, third licensed principal within the high school, which I think is needed.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion on the floor?
We've talked about evaluating staff, we as a board in general, um, over the years, and I do appreciate that that was shared, um, because that directly ties to academic achievement and our follow-through too as a district and intentional work and goals. So I wanted to point that out because I know that has been commonly asked about, um, and or discussed.
Correct.
Is there a cost increase?
Uh, the cost increase, according to the, uh, topic summary, is approximately $20,000.
Oh, yeah, I do see that now.
I think it's important to mention also that the responsibility of the dean of students becomes assumed by those two associate principals.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct, right, Mrs. Oginski?
That is correct, yes. That's a very good point to make.
Good question, Bobby.
Those roles will be dispersed between the two associate principals.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion of the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. You are voting to create, have the creation of the Assistant Principal, another Assistant Principal at the high school. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed. Thank you, that motion carries. Letter E, Consideration to Approve Retirement HRA District Contribution Plan. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the annual contributions to the district's HRA plan in the amount not to exceed $74,000.
Motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Is there any discussion of the motion on the floor? This is a routine motion that happens at this time of the year, every year, for this particular, uh, district HRA plan. Hearing no discussion of the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and that motion carries. Item Letter F, Report of Donations. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following donations. $100 from Parsons, $1,500 from an anonymous donor, $500 from J.W. Madigan Sons, $300 from City Gasco, $200 from Evergreen Terrace, $100 from Quinlands, $100 from VOM, $250 from Covantage, and $100 from Kierker &amp; Steinfest, all for the purpose of the Ability Center, for the Ability Center, for a total of $3,150.
Motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you to the businesses that donated, um, for the Ability Center.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing no discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Two items for closed session. Letter A, Consideration of a Motion to Adjourn Into Closed Session Pursuant to Section 19. Dot eight-five-one of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering C employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And Letter B, Consideration of a Motion to Adjourn Into Closed Session Pursuant to Section 19.851F of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect of the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, including discussion regarding conduct of a school district official. The school board may reconvene into open session to take any action deemed necessary as a result of the closed-session meeting. I will be looking for motions.
So moved.
Motion has been made to go into closed session to take up these two items. By Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Could we have a roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Abby Braun?
Yes.
Jill Maddick Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen Matt Miller?
Yes.
Scott Peterson?
Yes.
Catherine Solan?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
Dr. Dave Bardot?
Yes.
Annie Pyatt?
Yes.